Welcome, everybody, to the meeting this evening. We start with a bunch of allegiance. We have a public comment period. Do you have any?
You do not.
Okay. Moving on, consent agenda. Minutes from our previous meeting. The appropriations and late cabin transfers for D-13C and J-20. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda?
There he is.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
It's a move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. The move is seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Jason, okay with you? Okay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, old business. North Riverwalk extension update, Nick.
So, as you've probably seen, they started a rock wall down there at the Riverwalk Bridge, and they'll come way up. It stops at where they're stopped at, and then they'll grade back that dirt and slope it back for drainage and things like that, and then they'll go back and reseed it and everything. Same thing down at the very far north end, they're gonna do the same thing, they'll slope all that back. I know some people are concerned, like, what are they gonna do with that? But they'll create certain drains and does all the things it's supposed to do. So, they're kind of at a standstill right now because of the rains, a little too muddy to be doing concrete work and forming and stuff like that over there right now.
Okay. Looks nice what they've done.
Have they, you know, how they're doing it up there at that north end, it's, to me, it's almost like gonna be like a water chute going down there. Or if we develop something down there at the old dam, is that gonna be a, you know...
They're supposed to create, they're supposed to make it so it drains, so you don't have that problem.
Okay. The way it looks now, it looks like it would just...
Yeah, that's why I brought that up. You're gonna slope, everything gets sloped back. So, one, so it's movable, but it'll get sloped back, like, it'll start at the top and go back at an angle. So, it's movable and that, and so the water doesn't run like what you're talking about.
Well, no, I guess...
I get what you're saying.
It'll slope down into that sidewalk, is what it'll do.
Right, I understand.
And then that'll funnel down to that brit, or dam.
Yeah, so they're supposed to make it so it drains correctly.
Okay.
That's what you're supposed to do. So, we'll have to kind of wait and see, and I can act, ratey a little bit more.
Actually, with the heavy rain, that could be a pretty good amount of water coming down there.
Still a lot more dirt to pull out of there than...
There's a ton of dirt that has to be pulled out of there, which is good, because we can use it out there.
Reuse it.
Yeah.
And how about the amphitheater speaking, what's your report?
So, the city guys are on Row 12. If we get a break in the weather, they can probably have the Row 12 and 13 set probably in, I don't know, three to five days, and be done with our part of that. One of the things we need to figure out if we're gonna do or not, and Mark and I spoke about this a little bit today, is having a company haul the field dirt and then the cover dirt for us, so our guys can go do other stuff. It'll take us probably three to five days to haul what we need for the trucks we have. Once contracted out, it'll take a couple of days, max, to do it. And I've got, and if it's all right with council, I can work with Jason and Keith on figuring out who we're gonna use in doing that.
Okay, is that a process that needs to be bid, or is it...
Yeah, I already talked to the people.
Different people?
Yeah, the people that do that kind of work, so I kind of know what, who we would use and stuff like that. But if you guys will allow Keith and I and Jason to handle that, that'd probably be, because we're not gonna do it right this second. We have to wait until the roads are completed and stuff like that before we start hauling all that in, so...
You'd actually be talking to the amphitheater committee, wouldn't you, the Riverwalk committee?
Parks, amphitheater, I mean, whoever, it doesn't, yeah.
It's just, it's gotta be...
Yeah, it's whoever, I don't care who we talk to.
Well, the discussion I had with Nick today is that, you know, our dump trucks compared to the size of a large dump truck.
Yeah.
By the time you pay for all the fuel for our little dump trucks and...
Yep.
And our guys' time.
Yeah, and they've got a long list of things that they're trying to accomplish, and I think the math might even out pretty much if, you know...
We'd actually need money ahead.
Yeah.
So, we've done the math.
Well, and, you know, we're timing, we're trying to get all this done in the right manner and everything.
Right.
So, okay.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we allow Nick to move forward with this plan.
I'll second it.
Okay. Then, move is seconded to allow Nick and his committee, the Parks Committee, to visit with the people about moving the dirt and the cover dirt.
Yep. And the order on cover dirt.
Bring up our city vote. All those in favor? Jason, you okay with that?
He's on. He doesn't seem here. So, I don't know what's going on with him. Jason, can you hear us? He's kinda...
He might be muted.
He's not muted. Technology's great, one of ours. We can hear music or whatever he's got going on.
Okay, well, we'll say motion carries five zero on that. Okay, department head reports. Who wants to go first?
Sean is first.
Sean, okay, Sean, you're first, okay.
Okay, so, you have a pretty good idea of what we've been up to, I think, seeing in the newspaper, Facebook, et cetera. The first year we had Cooper, we ended up with right around 20 drug arrests solely due to his presence and allowing our officers to get in the vehicles. Two of them, I think, were distribution, and three quarters of them were meth-related arrests. Since January of this year, because we're a year and a half now with him, since January of this year, we're at 14 drug arrests already this year. One thing I've noticed is that our thefts, and I don't want to publicize this, because I don't want to jinx us, they've been at an all-time low for quite some time now. And we're talking a year plus. We've taken very, very, very few theft reports, so I'm thankful for that, because property crime, obviously, it affects people, and I don't like it when it, when it happens, because I get emotional, and we've got to deal with it. So, but they are, they're at an all-time low. We're just planning on keeping with the drug activity, and been working with Jay up at the Sheriff's Department to develop a good working relationship with him. He's gonna be helping us out on Waschungah days, and we're gonna help him out a little bit when the symphony's in town. And we plan to just keep heading in that direction, but overall, things have been going well on our end.
That's so good to hear, that cooperation is important.
Yeah, I believe it is, especially when we have larger events on either side of the fence, we can help each other out and get done what we need to get done, so...
Yeah, Jay's been very complimentary at the city and the job Sean and his guys are doing, so...
I think the publicity is good, too, because it lets people know what's going on, and that, you know, Officer Cooper's doing his job, and that you guys are doing your job.
Right, yeah.
Because sometimes there's question, you know, about...
Right, I know, and that's why I'm glad that I'm now putting out our own press releases, because I put them out and I don't, I don't wait to get out, they're out, and I don't have to worry about someone else doing them. And that's been the issue with the past, and, you know, it's not a knock on anybody, but they just weren't getting done. And so, we were doing a lot of things that nobody saw, no one knew about, because it's really not a new thing, because like I said, it's Cooper's first year, we got 20 arrests, but there's just very few of them got put out like they should have. So, but I'm doing myself, and they're all getting put out now.
That's good. That's good.
Good job.
Yeah, it is.
Best of all to everybody.
Yeah.
Very much appreciated in the community. I hear a lot of people complimenting.
Well, good, yeah, and we've been hearing a lot of positive feedback, too, ever since we started putting out the press releases. I don't like to think that people use it as a gossip, I think it's just more of they're in the know, and they know we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, what they expect us to do, and what they pay us to do, and it's...
But it also acts as a deterrent, you know?
Right.
This isn't what you need to be doing, you're gonna get caught.
Right, right, yeah, and like I was telling Keith, I've actually seen messages of people refusing to come to Council Grove because of the chance of getting caught, so that's a good thing in my opinion.
No way. We appreciate it, we appreciate it, we appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
Cooper getting along good with his officer?
What's that?
Is Cooper getting along fine with his officer?
Oh, yeah, him and Jimmy are bonded real well. And the first handful of months, we had some behavior issues, just because he had, you know, we got him, he was a quote-unquote "used dog." He had an adjustment period, like any animal would go into a new person, but, yeah, over time, we've refined that. He actually runs him off the leash a lot now, and he, he goes with every command he's supposed to do, he does exactly what he needs to be done, and I have no concerns with him whatsoever. He lets him out to go potty, he's not on a leash anymore, he comes right back when he's supposed to. He can see a cat or an animal, he's not gonna chase him, he comes right back like he's supposed to. So, yeah, we've had really good success with him overall.
Not knowing a lot about it, does he have to be retrained every so often?
Oh, yeah, matter of fact, he just got recertified, unfortunately, twice, not just financially by, because in October, he had to go for his yearly recertification, and then the board voted, just in charge of that, that they wanted to go back to spring certification, so not only did we certify in October, we recertified again in April, which was a little bit premature, but we had to do it, because now it's gonna be every April. So, yeah, he's getting recertified on a yearly basis.
Does he go, just for curiosity, does he go to veterinary, like, like we do for yearly checkups or something?
Oh, yeah, yeah, he goes for checkups, and he actually injured his foot a while back, and they were real great with that. And so, we got him healed up from that, and he's back to doing what he does. But, yeah, the vets been real good to work with, and he's actually calmed down a lot out there, because for a while, he was skittish around them, the animals don't like going to the vet, like, we don't like going to the doctor, but he's gotten, he's gotten to know him, and so it's not quite such of a big deal to take him out there now, but, yeah, he goes for checkup shots, things like that.
Somebody asked me about that.
Yeah, well, we partner, the vets here in town's partnered with us and provided shots for free in his checkups, major surgeries or anything, we would offer, just have to pay for those, but I worked with Katie on that, and Sean did, too, about taking care of him, so...
Have you taken him to the school to introduce him to the schoolchildren yet?
Yeah, we've had him to the schools a couple of different times.
Okay.
With COVID, obviously, it's been a little bit challenging, so the, the last time we had him there, we actually did a little demonstration outside, where the class could kind of separate, but we could have him there and put on a little demonstration. But, you know, they still got some exposure to him, and did a cute question and answer with the elementary school students, so, yeah, they enjoyed it.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, on another topic, doing okay with ammunition and stuff? You're not having, you know, we hear that there's ammunition shortages and stuff, you're not having any problems with that?
We've had pretty good luck. I ordered some ammunition, just a couple of, about three months ago. I ordered extra because of that, and a majority of it came in, in a timely manner. There was one, I believe, one specific round that was on back order, and I've since got that, so, yeah, we're doing good on that.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything that you need?
No, everything I need. I work with that guy, yeah, we get it taken care of and we get it done.
Anybody have any questions?
Your budget, you staying within your budget, okay?
Absolutely, I think we're under, as far as I know.
Yeah, he's in on his budget, twice, so...
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, no problem.
Sure do, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Getting extra looks at Sean.
I'll wait for you.
Okay, next, do you have a order?
Justin.
Justin?
There's one, two, one, two, and two at a time.
Okay.
So, we're not here all night.
That's good.
Good seeing everybody again. By the way, Justin Carlson, I'm the Recreation Director, I don't think I met you.
No, we haven't met.
Good to meet you. Just kind of give you a heads up, right, we're right right now, all the softball and baseball, sign-ups and T-ball are rocking and rolling now with the kids practicing. We're kind of transitioning out of the high school season with them, utilizing our facilities. We did have the regional baseball tournament here last night, which we were able to get the field going so they could play. Unfortunately, our boys ended up coming up short, but the plan is, is to go ahead and have them play here on Thursday night, but we'll just kind of see what the weather is, but I know that the school district has a contingency that if it's not playable here, they will be taking them to Sodin's Grove and Emporia. But like I say, if, when the weather's been crazy, it's really nice to see a whole bunch of people going in and out and utilizing the rec center. When it's been raining, from probably the time the kids get out of school, these past two weeks, they've been in and out of the armory, using the batting cages and indoor facilities, and then when it's been nice, all of the fields are just going crazy, so it's not having, not having anything going on last year, it's really exciting to see all of the kids out practicing and playing. And right now, we're sitting with 18 teams from T-ball all the way up to high school girls and high school boys, so the numbers rebounded really, really well from zero to now, but based on numbers from 2019, we're actually up in total numbers from what we were in the past. Just to kind of give everybody a heads up where we're at, as far as the leagues are concerned, the boys' side, the Dixon County League, so from children that are nine years old up to high school boys will compete in the Dixon County League, which would be Abilene Chapman, Junction City, Harrington, Solomon, and those areas. Girls are Dixon County as well, essentially the same communities. The only little change to that was this season, there's no, it's kind of crazy, there's no 8-100 Boys Division within the Dixon County League. So, having known that, I visited with Corey Linton, the Osage City Rec Director, and he allowed our 8-100 Boys to get into their league. So, they would be playing Mission Valley, Eskridge, Northern Heights, Linden, did I mention Linden? And the farthest west we would go would be Appenous, which is a small community just on the east side of... Mark Shaggy said, I'd never heard of Appenous until he told me. Never happened, but I was, I was really blessed that they allowed us to get into that league, and there's 14 teams in that league, so that's pretty incredible. Our 11 to 13-year-old boys, we are in the rotation, we're gonna be able to host that tournament this year, so that'll bring 10 teams in from July 5th through the 11th. And next, next year, we're in the rotation for one of the girls' tournaments, but I'm not quite sure, because there's a little bit of a snafu. Riley was gonna host the older high school age division, but they didn't have a team, so they backed out, so I don't know where we're at, but we'll, we will be hosting a girls' tournament next year. Just kind of a heads up on my part-time staff, Amy Lift, she's been absolutely incredible, communicating with the public via Facebook, on the phone, and like I say, helping out in the concession stand when I help train kids, she's been a huge help and been a very, very good employee for me since she started. And then, like I say, hopefully, when the kids get out of, get out of high school and off their college finals and stuff, I'll be able to start my summer seasonal workers here shortly, and like I say, it's just, it's very exciting to get some normalcy and bring some people into town this season, so... Questions?
This, the July 5th through the 11th tournament that you're talking about?
Uh-huh.
How many actual, you said, how many teams?
10.
10 teams, and then, so that's them and their families possibly?
Correct.
In town, okay, just, we've kind of made an effort to work with the schools and this, too, to let, like, the food places and stuff know, because sometimes they aren't staffed heavily enough when that happens.
Right, and what, what I, when I have all of the schedules, which I do now currently from T-ball all the way up to our high school boys, I send a copy of the schedule to the managers of all of our, all of the, pretty much every business that's gonna get flooded that would be, like you had mentioned, on a normal Tuesday night, wouldn't have anybody, but we've got 10 teams over here playing baseball and softball, and they get a call saying, why are all these people here? So, yeah, I send the schedules to all the, all the restaurants.
Good, because they need that, they, as far as help and product, you know, some of them have told me they ran out of product, and they didn't know, so, okay.
See that one tournament over there now, on the new field, with the bleachers and everything? You're lacking there now, or anything we can do to make it better, or anything, any ideas?
Uh, no, actually, I think we are setting up really good, and Mark, I'm glad you mentioned that, you would not believe how many countless people came up to myself and Jay Dornboss, the Athletic Director, and compliment the looks of the facility, considering how much rain we had, but not only that, the bleachers and the concrete that were there with the new concession stand and the whole nine yards was, there's a lot of people that hadn't been over here in a long time and saw all the improvements, I think they hadn't been here since even we added the red, the red shale, and they were just overwhelmed at just how everything fit together and was nice. But to answer your question, though, I need to find some time when it dries up to re-crown the fields, because I've got a few low spots that are holding water, but not a very good shape. Thank you.
Anyhow, any questions?
Any invitational tournaments scheduled for this year?
I'm working on with that 11 to 13 and under age group of boys, and with, within the parents, and also a 8-100 girls tournament as well, and just trying to find, find the dates. The older age groups dealing with, there's a big change between ASA that went to USA, and all of those tournaments are now Metro, so to be able to compete with them, we would have been a struggle. U-Trip is doing the same thing, so what I'm doing is talking to our local coaches and trying to get some invitational tournaments that are not affiliated with any of those major tournaments, because the two big boys, U-Trip and ASA, which is now USA, are absolutely just destroying smaller communities. Like, I know I talked to a couple of my friends, or friends, colleagues, directors in Abilene and Clay Center that used to host these small tournaments, and they can't, they can't get one going because of what Kansas City and Wichita, Manhattan was supposed to have one the first weekend in June, and they pulled all the age groups out of it, so Manhattan's not even getting one. So, I decided to go on the flip side of it and just get invitations where it's not affiliated with anything.
Anything else? What about the pool?
I'm gonna defer to...
It's good and going.
It's going and going.
Derek's working out the kinks on it. There is a leak on one of the pipes that we're working on, Derek and his guys have been working on that for last week. Worst-case scenario is that the company that built the pool had to come in and fix it for us, and we're hoping that's not the case, but Derek will have a better idea by the end of the week, what direction we need to go, so... But it has water in it, and everything's running, we just got to figure out where this leak is at, so...
We'll have swimming this summer, huh?
Yes.
Yep, and then the pool company, they're having a lot of issues with existing pools and new pools, with that hard freeze, they're finding a lot of issues with people having leaks with their lines that are underground and things like that, so...
Stupid.
So, if we get it running, when are we opening?
Projecting March 30th, or, yeah, that'd be awesome, May 30th, Sunday before Memorial Day, 30.
That's what we're projecting.
Projected.
As long as everything goes well and we can get the leak fixed, if not, that company can be here, Derek talked them into last week, they could be here in three weeks to take a look at and figure out what they need to do to fix it, so...
So, it can't operate until it's fixed?
Well, it can, but I don't think it's probably wise for us to waste 20,000 to 30,000 gallons of water a day, and that's kind of what it's losing at this point, so I don't think that's probably a wise decision, in my opinion.
Would it lose more than if it was being used? I mean, I know that...
No, even with it not being used, it's losing that amount of water. And you'll probably lose more because kids splash and something like that, I mean, 20, 30,000 gallons of water is a lot of water. It's treated water, so that's being wasted.
And it depends on the nature of the repair problem, like, you know?
Yeah, Derek, I think, has it probably, he's pretty close to figuring out what line it is, and then once he figures out what lines, he's gotta locate where it is in line. And if he can't do that, obviously, that company will have to come in and do it for us, so, but that's kind of, kind of where we're at with it.
And kind of a positive thing financially with the lifeguards, Kate Gronquist, I don't know if any of you know who she is, she's the fax teacher at the high school, she's certified to train everything but WSI, and she's actually gonna come to our facility to train our lifeguards, and if we have to, if we get behind, visit with the life center, and we're about this close for them allowing us to use the life center for the water stuff, except for the deep rescue things. And then I also found, she also hooked me up with a gentleman that is teaching WSI, the lifeguard training, he's also coming to our pool. So, I know here, a few years in the past, we spent thousands of dollars sending our kids in city cars to Osage City, we're gonna be able to do all of that here.
Good.
So, be able to keep it here.
Nice to be able to contract with her to have other pools come to our location, where we could make a little profit off of that, too.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Good to meet you.
Yes, sir.
Good year this year. I see you guys have gotten to figure out about the manners hanging on the things, too, for a while, there was a, looked like you had fun there for a while.
Yep.
Okay, Recreation Committee, recommendations for summer seasonal. Hey, at this time, I would like to link the following appointments for summer seasonal for 2021. Recreation Maintenance, Kyle Hayes at 991, Braden Reddick at 991, Naja Carlson at 991. Concessions, Aspen Pearson at 769, Creighton Smicka at 769, Rowan Hula at 769, Wesley Vay at 769, Cassia, I'm sure, I'm butchering some of these names, I'm sorry, Mullen at 70, at 769, Kearney Mullen at 769, Emily Bacon at 769, and Remy Marsdollar at 769. And I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments?
Second.
Okay?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the summer seasonal appointment list. All those in favor? Approved? Oh, wait a minute, Jason?
I don't know.
Still not here?
Okay.
Opposed? Okay. And then, motion carries, five zero. Thank you. Okay, Streets and Parks, recommendations for Chippin Seal.
So, I worked with Jeff, and I sent a copy of this to the Street and Parks Committee, and they were good with it, too. These are the streets that we recommended for the miles, Chippin Seal, that the county provides labor and equipment for, and it's North Chautauqua from Main Street to Simcock, North Belfry from Main Street to Con Street, Con Street from Belfry to Chautauqua, Huffaker from Mission to Washington, and North Rock Hill from Con to Huffaker. So, that's what we, the letter that I do the request with to the county is gonna have on any of these streets, so...
Any questions?
Did you look at Simcock up there, by the Boy Scout Cabin? I think that's Simcock that runs east and west.
Hmm, yeah, I think Jeff did.
It's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, so I know that some of the areas, he was, he looked at all of them, because I told him, I said, well, pick what you think is the worst, and Jeff drove all the streets and looked at them, because I told him to look up in that area, because that hill was really bad, and then he go, hill's really bad. So, I said, that's one that we have to do, and when I said, pick it, do stuff up in that area, he looked at everything.
Would you drive up there tomorrow and look at that?
I can.
Simcock?
Yep.
Because it's, these, these need attention, but I think it's in worse shape than these here.
I can look at it, yeah.
You gotta look at it. And then also, I was telling, I don't know if I told the mayor, out of City Lake, the road that goes by our old caretaker, that road is horrible. I don't know if any of you been out there lately? The paved road that goes by the, by the docks? I mean, that, that road is just coming apart.
It's got some holes, it looks like it's had some washing.
Yeah, and I don't know if we should address that, or just take it back to gravel, or, or what, but if we don't do something pretty soon, we're gonna lose that, that road.
Maybe that's one you can go look at, too, that's what?
Is that something that the Lake Committee should be involved with, or just Streets and Parks?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt.
Like I said, we have a Lake Committee, and that is in their jurisdiction out there, not, not Northern Parks.
I was just shocked by it, when I, when I drove on it the other day, how bad it was.
The Lake Committee probably has money in that fund, too, to put something with that road, okay?
They might, uh, Nick, do you know what's in that, that 10%?
There's, there's around $90,000 to $100,000 in there, so... But, yeah, I also remember, since we're talking about annexation, we also pay the termini and stuff out of that fund as well, so. Depending on what it needs.
He's right, it's...
I've been out for a while, so I remember the last time I was out there was a couple of months ago.
I was out there, I've been, I've been out there at least once or twice a week, but it's, yeah.
It's getting some holes over there, kind of on the, I don't know what side that would be, but that side would be driving it from that. We went on Monday, or Sunday and looked at it, yeah.
Let me know when you guys want to go out there.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would have one question for the lakes and parks committee, or street and parks committee. Like I said, it's in my neighborhood and I walk with my dog around Durham Park. Has anyone looked at the pillars that are supporting the small kitty depot out there recently? There is, on the south side of that building, there's one that is copped, it's the bottom is what it is, it's rotting away, giving away. It's on, there's seven on the north, two pillars on the north, two pillars on the south, and they're set on blocks, but if you go by and look at it, I think maybe somebody should make a suggestion of what we should do because I thought it was leaning. No, 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 no.
Silvett, Silvett, the Silvett.
The Silvett.
Silvett.
A little mini depot, but...
Yeah, mini depot that's out there has two pillars on the north, two pillars on the south, and the one on the southeast, I think someone should take a look at because...
Well, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I give a little background on that.
I just need to know about it.
Historic sites committee looked at it.
I knew the council meeting was tonight and so I didn't have time to break it out.
Well, we looked at it several years ago and I tried to find a carpenter to give us some bids on repairs on that building. I could not find anybody who wanted to work on it. So Sharon and I and the historic sites committee had looked at it and the problem is they set it right down on that concrete pad and it should have never, it should have never been set down like that. It should have been, should have been a foundation or something to put on to keep it up off the water and it does have a lot of rust.
There's a two inch pad up on top of the concrete foundation that that pillar set on, all four of them do. So it is two inches above the concrete pad that goes into the building, but I just suggest somebody looks at it because right now, about a third of the way up, it's starting to buckle like this. And it's just a base, that's only a four by four with one bice supporting outside of it, but I just thought maybe someone should take a look at it.
It's got other issues too.
Yeah, I won't disagree with that.
Yeah, so I mean, I can take Jeff over there and see if there's anything we can do to shore it up, but I don't, you know, if you can't, if you guys couldn't find a carpenter to fix it, I mean, there's a reason you guys look for a carpenter. I mean, we can go look at it, see if we can make it safer.
Well, at least something that's going to fall down when you fix it, we need to do something.
I would leave that to everyone else's opinion. I'm just asking you to take a look at it and there's only one that looks real serious.
You have your options.
I might be able to just at least replace the piece that councilman was talking about.
Yeah, I'll talk to Jeff, when we get time, we'll go take a look at it.
Yeah.
All right, so the streets, are we good with the streets? We'll go look at the one that Mark's talking about.
Yeah, well, do you guys want to go ahead and make a motion to accept the recommendation?
I can't wait till the next council meeting to get this to the commissioners, so they have to have it so they can over to the quantities to do the chip and seal, so.
So can we make a recommendation to approve it and then if there's one that needs to change, give them the authority to?
Yes.
Make a change then?
That would be a good thing to do, that way.
I think I can handle that.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
It's fine.
I think you got a second over there.
Mark, okay. Been moved to seconded to accept the street recommendations for the chip and seal for the year from the county, however, subject to some changes, Nick looks at the conditions of the other...
Wait, I'll get Keith and Jess, Jason together and we'll go look at them.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Okay, we're ready for governing body, we can start with Nick.
So, I went to purchase a Conex box and with the prices of everything going up, a Conex box has doubled in price. So I talked to my uncle who used to be in the military and he's suggesting contacting Fort Riley because they get rid of those things all the time and give them away. So he's going to help me get into contact somebody, with somebody up there and maybe we'll find one for free. If not, I'll be coming back and asking you guys how much you really want to spend on a Conex box because right now they're a little over $5,000.
Well, I know they're way less than that. There are states, California for one, are trying to give them away.
Yeah.
Because that's where the ports are. If you look for states that have the ports, like Texas or Louisiana, New Orleans, or California.
Yeah, I don't know.
Acres full of them that they can't give away.
Yeah, but by the time you transport it, you're spending the same amount.
No, transporting up from there, an empty Conex container is not going to cost you that much.
Well, okay.
But check, check, please check, please check, because I think maybe our local sources here are trying to gouge us, but in addition to that, most cities don't allow them in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
They can't get rid of them.
Yeah, I don't know, well, all the...
Kansas City ought to have them.
Well, they have them, but these companies, these companies buy them, buy them and then they resell them, that's what's going on with them, Larry. And then they mark up the price, you know?
Yes.
You know, when I looked two months ago, they were about 25...
If they mark the price up that much, it'd be cheaper to ship it to you.
It's Conex box, all that you do is...
It's an empty box. It's an empty metal box that weighs less than 2,000 pounds. I've used them in construction, that's the only reason that I think we are getting gals locally, not...
Well, I know this, that's the reason I'm bringing it up because I don't think it's wise to spend $5,000 on one, so I'm looking for a cheaper way of getting one, is what I'm looking for.
Fort Riley might be able to.
And Fort Riley gets rid of them all the time, so. And I have Jim Crosby who can help me and then I have my uncle, Jeff Woodall who can help me.
Also, through Fort Riley, or Fort Riley, the Flin Hills Regional, is Fort Riley still a part of the Flin Hills Regional like they always have been? They're a partnership, so that is, you might talk to the lady, can't think of her name. Kristy.
I have her information.
Yes, you might talk to her and she might connect you with our connection because that's one of the things that we did when we used, we used to do a lot of that, so. That might be a good connection there since they know we work together. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, and anything else, Nick?
Deborah Henson contacted me, the farmer's market would like to continue in the location they are for this year. She wasn't able to come in and do the request, so I told her I'd do it for her. So I don't know if you guys have any issues with that, right there in front of Carnegie or to the side of the...
Mission Street.
Yeah.
So we're down fighting, I think.
So as long as you guys are good with that, they'd like to continue with that.
I think they have a lot of drive-up business, I think people are just pulling up.
Yep, and if you guys are good with that, I'd like her to know that they can continue there, so.
I don't know that we even need a motion, we'd never taken it away from her or them, so.
No, she just wanted to ask again, just to make sure it was okay instead of assuming.
Josh, do you see any problem with that?
No, we're not, any issues with being there. Are the barricades...
They don't use the barricades anymore. They're, they just were too cumbersome to move around and stuff. People don't go very fast down that road and when they're set up there, there's people out in the street and stuff and people don't, it hasn't been an issue over there, so.
Doesn't seem to be a real busy...
Because what happened with those barricades, they ended up just getting leaning against the Carnegie and then they were getting mowed and weeded around and they sat there for about a year before I had the guys to pick them up.
Well, there's a bunch of, quite a few older ladies and... They're having to move. Yeah, that's what I was going to say, older couples and ladies and stuff, they can't move them if they're good, so. Okay, great, anything else?
That is it.
Okay.
Nothing for me?
Okay. How about you, Keith?
I don't have anything either, Mayor, tell me.
Mark?
Just a question for Nick on the, on the chip and seal, are you going to rent the, I don't know what it's called, the hot tare that fills the cracks before they do that?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay, that's all I have.
Because Jeff's, I think Jeff's timeline's a little further out than it normally is, so we'll have time to get that done, so.
I think it's worth the investment, so.
Yes.
Okay. Is that all?
That's it. Thank you. I have nothing to say to you, Mayor.
Okay, Sharon?
I don't have anything, but Nick, wasn't there something you were going to bring up tonight? What did we just talk about?
Don't talk about the firefighters, the mayor's going to appoint that firefighter.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, because she was going to do that.
Okay, all right, sorry.
No, you're good.
What was it?
That's all.
Okay.
Done.
So, Mayor, thank you though.
Everybody wants to go home? Okay, well, I have a few things, I need to appoint Ethan Larson to volunteer firefighting, getting background check physical and drug alcohol screening and I appreciate a motion to approve that appointment?
Sure.
Okay, second?
Seconded.
Okay, been moved to seconded to approve the appointment of Ethan Larson, fire, volunteer firefighter, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Then I have the one other thing and that is with, with council's permission, I would like to ask Nick to look into it, start looking into public relations companies that might want to work with us should we decide to go forward with annexation since we talked about timing last night at our meeting. If y'all feel that, I feel, you know, it's going to take a little bit to find someone and, you know, we all talked about the stimulus and how long the stimulus, you know, how much time we'll have with the stimulus, so.
I have a comment on that, Mayor.
Sure.
The zoning, planning and zoning, two years ago, had already talked with Mr. Brosmer, who is the county surveyor, plotting out as part of our zoning process because the lake would not qualify as an agricultural area. So we eliminated that and he gave us the boundaries, exemptions for that so we could designate it as a lake area. And this has already been done, this was done a couple of years ago. You might want to check with Steve Brosmer, we had him go through and block it off at what, no, half mile areas rather than go the zigzag, salt to line to mark that area off out there and you may want to check with him because those drawings and everything should already be in place, we've already paid for them. Because we were going to exempt that from agriculture because it didn't qualify for anything.
I think we're talking about two different things, Larry, what are we talking about?
Excuse me, Bill. Do you think we're talking about the same thing?
We're not.
No, I don't think so.
She's not...
I'm talking just about public relations.
But you're going to have to have the outline, the diagram of an area. That's already been done, that's already been done, is what I'm saying. I would like everyone to at least take a chance and look at it because that would be our annexation area unless you want to go point to point, corner to corner and Mr. Brosmer could tell you about that since he had already done this for the planning and zoning for zoning purposes. That's only, that's only a suggestion.
Yeah, so that would be all part of the information you would give that company that you end up hiring to present the information to the public. So you are right in that, I remember that being done, Larry, but what she's talking about is hiring a public relations, like a mediator basically to get the information out to the people at the lake and to the people in the town about the annexation process, the benefits and all that stuff, that's what she's talking about.
Which that is information that they could use.
See, my point is the fact, they're going to say, what belongs to this annexation area?
Right.
We're going to have to come up with it sooner or later and all I'm suggesting is maybe we have the bulk of it already done, surveyed and on file that your public relations people can use.
Maybe we can have that available. Perhaps we can have that available at our next meeting, just that map so that the...
Yeah, we had that, that was done a couple of years ago.
Okay, yeah.
I'll talk to James and we'll all get it.
You know, because we're going to, we're going to get information at our next meeting about costs and cost of the person and everything and so we can have the area information as well.
Yeah, but we have the land laid out for zoning purposes, what we had to do for extra territorial zoning.
Sure.
Would you like a motion?
Or a conversation, if anybody has conversations?
I would make the motion that we allow Nick to start investigating appropriate PR firms or something to help with the annexation process.
Second.
Okay, moved to seconded to, ask Nick to look into public relations company information concerning possibly annexation in the future. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, five zero. I believe that's all that I have right now, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
We're leaving, set next week for...
Twenty fifth, twenty fifth at 5:30.
Is that the Monday?
No, that's a Tuesday, that's a Tuesday.
Tuesday? Did Julie not make it that day or something?
No, 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 this is for the chamber.
Chamber.
The 25th is with the chamber.
25th is with the chamber, but it's a Tuesday.
And then June the 7th was with the...
Yeah, we're studying with the chamber.
And then June the 7th, work study with the annexation.
At 5:00.
At 5:00.